Well, I'm guessing he'll be joining shortly. We should probably get started. It's pending to order and Debbie, if you would note attendance, of course, assuming he joins, we'll consider him here.
Not in.
Let's. Let's go ahead and begin with if like.
Okay.
The flag of the United States of America.
America. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, well, first up is going to be our agenda review. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. And if so, I would accept a motion to proceed with the agenda as.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
What would you like to the motion to be?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss other items. I'm sorry. Did you say something?
Say anything, Sean.
Okay. I'd like to make a. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss other items and agenda requests.
We'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The request is to discuss other items and agenda requests and I'll open it up for discussion among the other board members.
So I wanted to talk.
The first thing that I'll. Sorry, there seems to be a delay and I don't know if it's on my end or what. Can you guys hear me? Okay, just checking my own internet. Okay. So there's the request was to discuss other items. I will point out that my intent currently is to try to talk with OSBA. A regarding upcoming work session and to have it be a topic of discussion during the work session. So if that would be a minimal, that's one option. But you're welcome to share your thoughts regarding why you might want it to be discussed tonight instead.
Can I go ahead and talk? Are we good to go?
Yeah.
There is a bit of a delay, so I'm going to give it a few seconds to make sure that we're in the clear. And I just wanted to talk about, you had sent us an email, Jonathan, to the board about the topic of other items. I'm sorry, the screen is changing, so I don't know what's happening here. And I wanted to discuss agenda requests. I had a question of the process. When a when a board member or a community member of any kind sends in an agenda request, we agreed as a board that we would send it to either the board chair or the superintendent. And I was wondering, when we do send in our requests, what is the response to the people who have sent in requests? Whether they get on the agenda, whether the request is changed, who who's in charge of responding to those people? About what is decided to go on the agenda or whatnot?
Thank you for the clarification. Any other board members have any any comments they'd like to make regarding this request?
I think it's an important topic. I think saving it for the next work session would make a more productive conversation because we'd have a chance to have the proper board policy in front of us and all of the agreements that have been made. And the public can see those at the same time. So I would like the discussion, I suppose I would like it to be discussed in the work session instead of today.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any any other board members with thoughts they'd like to share?
Well, I would concur. I think it's nice that we're going to have an opportunity to discuss it further. However, I have questions too. I have had some emails back and forth with our superintendent and I'm I'm at a loss with how agenda items are considered and, you know, just basically, I would say as a board member, just to get the follow up and to have it acknowledged. That certainly has been my case. I'm not. I'm not sure what you're discussing. Yeah, I would just like to avoid what happened at our last meeting. And that was a real breakdown in communication somewhere. I would love to avoid that.
I would echo Lori's thoughts on that. I was just going to say it sounds like there's still a lot of confusion and miscommunication around how our process works. And so it sounds like it would be a really good idea to make sure that that's really clear and that we're following it consistently. I don't have a preference as to whether it happens tonight or later on, but I think it's important to talk about.
Thank you, Jennifer. So it's been moved and seconded. We're in the middle of discussion, Tom. Yeah, anything?
I disagree. I agree with with everything that's that's been stated and it would be a good discussion topic for a work session and we can have the documents and policies in front of us and we can all be prepared to to do a little do a little training. And agree and just kind of review, review our agreements.
Thank you.
Well.
Yes, Jennifer.
Has everybody had a chance to speak?
I wanted to say something again.
I just was going to propose that I moved to amend the amend amend the motion to read that we discuss other items and agenda requests at the next work session.
Okay, so there's been a motion to amend the request to amend the agenda.
I think Shelley had Shelley, you had your hand up.
I have a hand up just to say one more thing. I didn't know Jennifer was going to make a motion. I didn't know discussion was over, so.
Well, discussion doesn't have to be over to make a motion, but you're welcome to continue the discussion.
Okay, I didn't know. It is nice to know that we are that there is a planned training in the future with OSBA or whoever to talk about this. So I'm very happy that that's going to happen. When did you say that was going to happen, Jonathan?
Now, the current plan is on the 28th on our work session. We were finalizing that. We talked about this at a previous meeting, but we're trying to finalize all the details with Sarah now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so motion on the floor stands, which was to request a to request to discuss other items and agenda item requests tonight. There was a motion to amend that request by Jennifer, which but currently the the motion on the table is Shelley's. So unless there's any other discussion, we would vote on that one as it stands. Lori, I think I see you talking, but you're unmuted.
I should have been playing charades. Okay, here we go. I just wanted to say one last thing. I hope with our next training, we can actually resolve some of these questions and protocol. It would be extremely helpful and it it would certainly answer questions that I've had and experienced. So I'd like to see it wrapped up and have it in place. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess with that, let's let's take the vote. Debbie, would you please do the the vote for the requested motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is for Shelley's motion.
Correct.
Thank you. Janet?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Earth? A thumbs up or thumbs down?
I don't know. I don't know what's going on tonight. I'm having issues here with my internet or something, but I could hear what you guys were saying. I just couldn't get on.
Oh.
If I understood it right, Shelley Shelley wanted to discuss this protocol, but then I understood it to be somebody else made a motion to push it back to the next work meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, but it wasn't seconded. So we're voting on to talk about it tonight versus at the at the work session.
Right. So so sorry for the confusion or the the motion on the table is to request to talk tonight about the other items category and about agenda. I had mentioned that we're sort of actively trying to get that on the agenda for training because there seems to be a lot of concern and confusion around it. And so I just I threw that out there as a as an FYI that we are planning to try to do that for for two weeks from now at the work session.
I I would just like to point out that I believe what Ms. Nealon is stating has absolutely. I think there's two baskets. I think there's apples and oranges going on. I I look forward to the workshop in which we talk about protocol and agenda items, but I believe she also mentioned other items, which to me is we've got oranges in this bowl and apples in the other. So does the motion have to be reconfigured for one or the other, or possibly both? For me, it's a little bit confusing right now. Ms. Nealon, is it my understanding that you wanted to talk about both agenda items and how they're placed on the agenda and also separately, the topic of other items and category on our agenda?
Yes, so I I made a motion to amend the agenda to talk about both of those topics tonight. And from what what I've learned is that we are going to be having a work session on in our work session in December is going to cover those topics. Is that correct? Both of them, other items and agenda requests? Is that correct?
That's what we're trying to get. I'm trying to arrange it that way right now. I don't have final confirmation yet, but that's the plan.
Okay, so I'd like to withdraw my motion at this time to discuss that tonight. I'd like to make a new motion. I'd like to make a motion to.
We have to.
Oh, you have to vote. Okay, thank you. Yeah. I thought I could withdraw it.
I'm pretty sure not. So if we could go ahead and complete the the request, would you go ahead and start the roll call one more time, Debbie, please?
Yeah, you want me to start over from the. Perfect. All right, Janet? This is super confusing. Guess I'll vote no then.
Right.
What Ms. Nealon just. So.
You vote no.
All good. Tom?
Yes, I agree. I'm voting no. I I would love to talk about it in December. I'm sorry.
No.
Lori?
I hope I'm getting this right. No.
Shelley?
No.
Jonathan?
No.
And Jennifer?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay. The floor is back open. Shelley, I believe you were going to make a new motion. Is that correct?
I I'm not sure that I have to at this point because we already know the information that I want to talk about is going to be on the agenda for the work session. So I don't think I have to make a motion now.
Fair enough. Yep.
Yep.
Perfect. Are there any other concerns or discussion about tonight's agenda? If not, I would accept the motion to approve the agenda as published.
And move to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
I second it.
And seconded. Any further discussion on tonight's agenda? Okay, with nothing further, Debbie, would you please take the vote?
Janet? Sorry, yes. Tom?
Yes.
Earth? Earth, you can use your thumb. Thank you. Lori?
Yes, thank you.
Shelley?
Yes.
Jonathan? And Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
We're going to move on to the consent agenda, which consists of, I think, almost entirely just approving of employment positions. We accept the motion to approve the cons. Oh, excuse me. Now there's also the minutes as well. Yeah.
I I need to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I second it.
And seconded. Thank you. Any discussion about the consent agenda? Okay, Debbie?
Janet? Yes. Tom?
Hi.
Earth? Yes, thank you. Lori?
Hi.
Shelley?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Okay, with that, we are on to our student reps. Welcome Tyson and Madison. You can see Madison. I cannot see Tyson or they're both muted.
Oh.
Hi, I'm Madison Manning and I'm an assistant diversity officer and school board rep.
Hello, I'm Tyson Erickson. I'm the Silverton High School ASB president. We are going to share a little bit of information about what clubs and activities are at Silverton High School are up to. To start off, ASB has completed our annual tree giving campaign. We end up buying gifts for 97 students in our community, thanks to the participation from both staff and students. This week is our winter week where we will celebrate the fine arts, have fun dress up days and an ugly sweater competition. We're also brainstorming new ways to keep the student body connected and planning a mental health campaign the month of January.
Key Club continues to make strong connections through their pen pal program with senior home in Silverton. They're also discussing ways in which they can help the Scots Mills toy drive on the night.
Our Red Cross Club recently sponsored a community blood drive, which collected 100 units of blood, saving 300 people before Christmas. They also plan on sponsoring another one in January and then again in May, as well as continuing a previous program aimed towards creating a defense against wildfires in the spring of 2021.
The Mental Health Awareness Club is currently meeting on the first and third Thursday of every month at 2 P. M. They issued a presentation on coping with stress last Thursday for the SJS students.
The Oregon Battle of the Books Club has been active. They are focused on reading the books on the 2020 to 2021 division list as a book club in lieu of competitions being canceled due to COVID.
Gender and Sexuality Alliance Clubs currently active and meeting Wednesdays from 1:30 to 2:30.
The National Honor Society has selected 40 new members to join, as well as elected new officers, President Jasmine Carlin and Vice President Alex Gardner.
The Environmental Clubs also looked at options as well as on a virtual mushroom gathering hike, which taught them fun guy identification.
Our speech and debate team is currently practicing twice a week over Google Meet and hoping to participate in the first virtual tournament in January.
Silverton FFA is keeping very active, earning second agricultural sales at the state level. Many of their officers are preparing for virtual competitions that are coming up, as well as planning club member meetings. They also are conducting their annual Christmas tree sales at Waco.
The Silver Masked Basketball Society is currently meeting weekly, as well as working on producing their first virtual show, 4 A. M. by Jonathan Dorf. They are hoping to have it posted on the school's website before winter break.
Some outdoor sports have continued to practice cross country, girls soccer, and a few others have found ways to stay active within the regulations and giving students a safe way to see others and exercise. Overall, many clubs and activities have become more active in recent weeks and plan to continue their interactions into the next quarter. Thank you for your time. Go Foxes. And on behalf of the students at the Silverton High School, we wish you all a happy holiday.
Thanks, Madison. Thanks, Tyson. All right. Well, next up, we have Brett Davison of Silverton Middle School, giving his principal's report.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Guys, if you want to turn on your cameras, that'd be great. I'm Brett Davison, a principal of Silverton Middle School. This is my fourth year in the building, although we're not actually in the building very much, but I really enjoy this position, the staff and the kids, and we're just, I'm just missing normal school a lot right now, which most people are. So for tonight, I want to give you kind of a rough idea of what we're doing during distance learning. And as you can see, I have a few SMS students here to give some insight to actually how things are going on their end and then finish my report after we hear from them. You have my my handout with a lot of information on it. I don't, I don't want to go through all the details of that because I want to focus more on what we're doing right now. But I do want to point out our enrollment numbers. It's something that I brought up in the past. I I think I have on there each year that the middle school has been open back to 2016, 2017. And as you can see, and as I brought up before, we've increased quite a bit. And most of those, for some reason, each year are unexpected move-ins that are somewhere between 20 to 30 kind of surprises, even from what we know is coming from Robert Frost. And this year we were a little nervous because there was a brief period of time in August that we had handed out 530 student registration packets. Then the fires hit and then our start date got pushed back. And when the dust settled, it was back to a normal number. But for a little bit, we we were a little concerned about that number. Now, still, if I include, I think the number on there is 475, and that's our current enrollment right now. If we include the people that I know are in online charters or homeschool, just because that was a choice that families made, we'd be right, probably at minimum 500 for our enrollment. So the 475 is probably not entirely accurate. So before I I get into some of the things that we're doing, I want to start with our students because they're way more interesting than me anyway. And I want to, I want you to hear from them because they're the ones that are managing this really difficult situation. And so I asked them three questions. I I think Mr. McCarty did something similar last time. And and the questions are probably really similar as well. And I just had brief conversations with each one of them, but I don't know entirely what their answers are. I just said, I want you to come. I want you to be honest with the school board about how things are going. And so I'm really proud of them that they were brave enough to come and do this. And so we're going to go in order. And guys, we talked about what order to go in. We're going to go Sawyer, Helen, Adelaide, and then Angela. And we're going to do one question at a time. So we're going to start with Sawyer. And the first question is, what have been some difficult things about distance learning this year? So Sawyer, let's start with you.
Hi, I'm Sawyer Stewart and I'm in eighth grade. It's been hard this year because I'm a new student and like this is my first year at this school. So like not really meeting anybody was really hard and like the sports. Like I'm really active and I like to play sports and that was also hard. Like even like going into Canvas and Ingenuity was really complicated at the start. So yeah, pretty much.
Thank you, Helen.
Hi, my name's Helen Yancy. I'm an eighth grader. Some of like my biggest struggles over the years so far have been with ingenuity. It's really not engaging for me. And it's so repetitive and that makes it really hard for me to stay focused and really absorb the information that it's trying to teach. And also something I really don't like is when I feel like edginess is like I'm only getting I'm only learning through edginess. So like, and there have been cases where I felt like that, where it's just like I'm getting all of my learning from edginess instead of also having live lectures through Google meets. And so that's been difficult for me.
Thanks, Helen. Adelaide?
Hi, I'm Adelaide Lord and I'm a seventh grader. So I think one of the biggest negatives for me so far in distance learning is seeing the way that the way edginess is structured and all of our online classes. It's really hard to keep up with your work. And then when you fall behind, it's really hard to catch back up. It's kind of just this downhill hill slope if you do fall behind in your work. And then if you do, it's like a lot of hours going into this schoolwork, trying to catch back up. So I think that's been really difficult for a lot of students this year with the whole distance learning structure.
Thank you, Angela.
Hi, I'm Angela Redda and something that have been difficult for me is edginess. Getting behind it is difficult because it's just sometimes too much work. I still try to keep up and Canvas has some much some too much work, but not really.
Okay, thank you. So second question, starting with Sawyer again, what have been some positive things about our our setup with distance learning?
Yeah, so it's really easy to like wake up five minutes before class starts and like get ready like really easily and just sit at my desk. But I also do like, like like in-person learning, regardless of like 10 kids in my class, and that helped me out so much. Like my grades are just like way better now that I'm doing that and it's just really helpful. So, yeah.
Thank you. Helen?
Yeah, so I really do like being at home. I'm a big homebody. I know that's not really directly related to academics, but if we're talking about that. I do like if you get done with your work really quick, if you really work hard and get everything done. You have more time to focus on things you want to be doing. And I know like the activities we can do are limited right now, but I still have more time to explore my own interests on the side if I get things done in a timely fashion.
Yeah, that's a good point. Adelaide?
Um, some of the positive things I've noticed has been the flexibility of the whole structure of it. Like we're getting way more sleep because we like Sawyer was saying, we are able to sleep in right before our classes. And students with other activities and commitments and jobs are able to do those without it impacting their school schedule because they can then go to school afterwards if they need to. So that's been a really positive thing about the whole structure of distance learning.
Thank you. Angela?
Um, for me, having some off days and having a good grade along the way and enough sleep.
Yes, that is important. So last question, starting with Sawyer again, what are you looking forward to most when we return to normal?
I'm making friends and playing sports is really what I'm looking forward to, you know, getting that like activity and actually meeting people. I feel like school is just going to be a lot easier because I'm going to get like more support and help.
Okay, Helen?
Really, I'm just looking forward so much to being back in a school environment because I feel like that's really where I thrive personally. Because it's a mix of being social and also learning. Because it's a mix of being social and also learning, and which I love. I love school. So this has been really hard for me, because it's so different. But I'm really looking forward to exploring all the opportunities the high school has to offer and doing that alongside my peers again, and being able to get to know new teachers and new people, and just experience that.
Thank you. Adelaide?
Um, yeah, I'm really excited to like, be back interacting with people face-to-face, whether that be other peers or staff members, because we're so limited right now, just the people that we have our classes with, compared to normal school, where we're seeing everyone in the hallways and at lunch, and those other teachers that maybe we had last year, but we would still talk to them. That's kind of been hard, without all that face-to-face interaction, to make connections with people. So that's what I'm excited for, going back to normal school.
Yeah, me too. Angela?
Meeting my teachers and helping around the school and doing art, because I really like to draw and color.
Yeah. Well, thank you, guys. I think it's a really brave thing, something that I never would have done when I was in middle school, that you guys are willing to do this. And thank you for being honest about stuff, because it's important that all of us know how it's really going for you at home. So unless you want to stay on for another, you know, hour or so, you guys can go ahead and go, if you want, and get good sleep, like you're talking about. And I'll probably see you around some classes. So thank you, guys. I'll see ya. Yeah, a lot of good stuff. Every time we talk to kids, we get great information. And they hit on Edgenuity a lot, and we've had to make lots and lots of adjustments as we've gone along. We just had a quarter switch, where we made a lot of adjustments with Edgenuity and our balance with how much we use it versus how much live teaching we do. And we're probably going to do the same thing, once we get to the third quarter transition and so on. Yeah, every time we get feedback from our kids, it's really, really good. And one of the things, I don't have it listed later, but it just reminded me of this. From, I can't remember who said it. We need to build in just more flexibility when we're back to normal. I mean, they, I hear that so often, where even though they don't like some of the things that are happening, they love the flexibility. And if we can build that in somehow, that is going to be a positive thing for lots of kids. So I just want to give you an idea of how we're kind of addressing this situation with distance learning. The way we've structured it is we're on a hybrid schedule. And you heard one of the kids reference this schedule, having off days. So we built a hybrid schedule for distance learning or in-person, to be able to go in and out fairly seamlessly, without kids having to change what they do on a day-to-day basis, for them, for our staff, and also for families too, for work situations. So our kids' schedules is, we, you know, we split by cohort, and kids have live classes either on Tuesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday. We have AG every morning, just to have that good connection. And then they have live class days, and then they have kind of independent learning days, and they go back and forth. And building that for if we ever went back in person, then they would still have the exact same schedule, online or in-person. They would come in for those two days, Tuesday, Thursday. They'd have their four classes, and then they'd be home the next day, and the other cohort would come in. So I don't know if we're ever going to get to in-person, but that's how we built the schedule, in hopes of that happening, and we'll see how it goes. The other thing that we did is we went on quarters. And so we had to find a balance between doing every subject and just overwhelming people, or doing too little. And so what we did is we took our six core classes and split them apart. And so kids would start first quarter with three core classes and an elective, and their counterparts would have three different core classes and an elective. And then when they got to the second quarter, they would switch. So the high school kept it going, besides their electives. Their core stayed first quarter to second quarter. But we chose to switch, because when I thought about, at our age, with our age group, a student ending math in March, when the COVID hit, and then not having math again until almost March for a whole year, or English, I didn't feel comfortable with that. And so even though we take breaks with, like, a quarter break, I felt that was better for them developmentally, that they wouldn't go that long without taking English or math. And then with our struggling students, we have a skills class. So if they have an off quarter, they will still have some math or still have some English to kind of keep them going, because we don't want them to take that long, long break. So we're pretty, I coordinated a lot with the high school over the summer, because we're the only two schools that have completely specialized classes. And so we were pretty close to what they did, except we rotate quarters and they stayed the same. So that's kind of how our big structure looks. With AG, that's where we do our SEL lessons and our main connection point. And we do it every day. Mondays, we do it at 10 o'clock and normally do a bigger meeting. And then we do an 8:30 kind of check-in, get them out of bed, check their grades kind of thing throughout the rest of the week. And like, today, I talked to a couple of teachers who were driving around to everybody's houses in their AG, giving them gifts for the holidays. So they use Mondays for things like that, and just trying to make those connections with kids and keep that connection strong in this time is really important. And so that's why we built AG in the first place. We are still trying to do our electives. So we are, we're still doing band, choir, drama, art, computer skills, sign language, whatever we can do. Some of them, we've had to alter quite a bit, but we still wanted to keep those classes that were of interest to kids going, especially right now, even though it's, they're hard to do. Because we know that's a really important thing right now, for people to have an outlet and kids to have just an extra connection. And then on those off days, because we did that hybrid schedule, we built in all of our interventions on kids' off days. So if they need a little extra help with math or reading, some of our sped programs or ELD, whatever it is, we can have lots of one-on-one meetings and small group meetings on kids' off days from their live classes. One of the things early on that we did is we, we've always had kind of a student support team, where teachers bring kids to our attention that just need something. It could be academic, social, personal, whatever it is. And we kind of beefed that up a little bit, because we knew this year was going to be pretty difficult. There's administrators on there, classified staff, licensed staff. And at the beginning of the year, we were pretty much meeting every day. Now it's probably a couple times a week still. The main thing at the beginning of the year was that onboarding process with internet connection and hotspots and displacement because of the fires. And now it's really moved into the limited in-person program. And one of the kids that talked, and I won't say who it is, because they didn't say, but is in that program, they reached out, their family reached out and just said, "We, because of internet stuff and getting behind in grades and all of that, can we please get him into something that can help him out, help him out?" And so we go through the guidance that the state has given us, and we do a truckload of paperwork and a lot of conversations and a lot of planning. And it's taken a ton of work. But we can get kids in, in limited in-person instruction on their off days, just to have somebody there to, half the time, they don't need any help. They just need somebody there, just in case there's a question, and it's a quiet place to go. And so it's been a, it's been a difficult process to get that up and running. But once it did, it has been a lifesaver for our kids. We have about 20 staff that are participating in some capacity in it. And before the county numbers spiked, we had about 80 kids in a week in 22 different cohorts. So it was a kind of a, this is where my weird building came in very handy. I could have them coming in from all different directions and be really safe. We had about 22 cohorts coming in on a limited basis to get extra help. And then we had 20 more about ready to come, but then the numbers spiked, so we had to freeze. And we had kids that were failing every single class before that started, that now are passing all their classes. We had kids really struggling with their emotional well-being, just being isolated, that are doing much, much better right now. And I wish we could do it for everybody, but we understand the guidance and the constraints, and we want to keep people safe. And we appreciate your support in that, because we strongly believe that it really is a kind of a make-it-or-break-it type of program for a lot of our kids. And so that's been going really smoothly ever since we started. And I brought each, so I brought each one of these topics up. It relates to the first two goals that are on my handout. And basically, we've had to try to get really creative with our interventions and trying to keep kids on track. We can't do everything we want to do, and what we're doing, the best we can to try to make that happen. And then just trying to stay connected and give some social, emotional guidance during a pretty tough time for everybody, families, kids, teachers, with kids in their home. Everybody needs it. And so we're doing our best in that regard. And I do want to pause and say that my licensed and classified staff, my whole staff, is amazing. Last spring, and then especially back in August and September, we asked our staff, and I did, to do more in a shorter amount of time than I have ever experienced personally in education. And so this is my, I think my 18th year in education. I've never, I've never had to, and I've never asked anybody to do as much as they have done in a short amount of time as they have. Plans changed, as you guys know, on a daily basis for months on end. And I've never in my life answered so many questions with, "I don't know." I felt like I answered almost all the questions that way for a long time, and they were very patient with me. And even though our system isn't perfect, and it's not working for everybody, and we know that, we've really poured everything we have into this, and my licensed and classified staff deserve all the credit in the world for pulling this together and for us developing what I think is a pretty good structure and routine for our school. And like you heard with the kids, you know, they, there's feedback that we need to keep getting better, and we'll continue to make adjustments and keep getting better throughout the year. But my hat's off to my staff for being patient with all my "I don't know" answers. And then on one related note to close, I believe I have a very resilient staff that has exhibited a lot of perseverance over the years. It's my fourth year here. And our current situation demonstrates that, demonstrates that resiliency, but they also have shown it as it relates to the building. And I won't belabor the point here, because I think most of you have heard me talk about this in the past. But I don't want to avoid it either, because I think it's part of who we are, and it is a part of what our kids experience each day when they are in the building. And from observing the process occur from a distance years ago, it seemed to me that the middle school moving to the old abandoned high school was a temporary solution to a broader problem, which was and is the state of our facilities, which you guys know. And we are now partway through our fifth year of that temporary solution. So I just want to remind people that, that this is the fifth year of the middle school being in the old abandoned high school. And it was one of my personal goals four years ago, to just help the staff come together and move past that feeling of being just sort of shoved in that building. And like, they got the short end of the stick. And they're just relentlessly positive and have, you know, worked really hard to create an environment for our kids in spite of that building. And I think they've made the best of it and done an awesome job. And so that goal number three in our strategic plan is a district. And without getting into the details of all the issues on our campus, I would just point to that goal and ask whether our old campus is a facility that reflects the excellence of education in our district. And I think we know the answer to that. And I do want to say, though, thank you for supporting the Long Range Facility Planning Committee, which I'm on, and I'm excited about. That effort is going to be key in addressing the middle school situation, but also the needs around the district as well. And it's exciting to think about what could be coming in our future for our kids and our staff in terms of a building. And so I wanted to thank you for that, but then I also want to mention that publicly, because that's why I promised my staff, that I would advocate for them and advocate for our kids for something that matches what we do. So that's all I have for tonight. I really appreciate your time. And honestly, the kids are way more interesting than me, so I should have brought 10 of them and just let them talk. But I thank you for giving me the time to talk about my school.
Thanks Brett. Really appreciate it. Great reporter. Okay. That brings us to our first public comment. And this is the same approach we've been taking since we went virtual due to COVID, where you please would email Debbie Balla if you would like to speak while we're collecting some possible folks to speak. I'll go ahead and read our public statement. "We're glad you are here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. Please be certain to state your name before you present. Remember that we all model the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. And a second public comment will occur later in the agenda, specific to discussion and action items." Debbie, anybody requesting to speak currently?
Jonathan, I do not have anybody that's emailed me.
And I've got no one raising their hands in the attendees.
Okay. Well, there is a second public comment. So if you do have something you wish to say, and it's germane to the action items of the meeting or the agenda, please feel free to email Debbie. That takes us to our union reps, SFAA and OSEA. Michelle had let the board know that she didn't have any topics for tonight, so she was not going to be present. So that'll move us straight to number nine with OSEA and Michelle.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Great, you're welcome. Hi, it's nice to see everybody tonight. Yeah, I've been a little under the weather the last few days, so sorry if I'm a little off today. We don't have too much. I'm going to keep this pretty brief, but I'll go ahead and jump in. We've had some staffing and safety concerns kind of around the district, just, of course, it has to do with COVID. Most of the outlining schools don't have a day custodian, but then there is some staff and limited students coming into some of the buildings. And so some of the concern is, you know, if somebody has an exposure or finds out midday that, you know, they had to go home, then if there's not a custodian on site, then who is going to deal with the disinfection? And, you know, kind of these protocols that we have to limit exposure to the other folks around the building. So that's kind of where the staffing concern comes in too, as far as, you know, then do we pull a custodian from another school? Are they going from in-town to an outlining spot? Because that's, well, they haven't had to go to an outlining yet, but I know they've gone from one school to the other. They're pretty loaded, bogged down with, you know, daily routines, plus now added cohorts of students or lippy kids coming in, and then there's cleaning, disinfecting in between them. So if they have to go midday to go clean another school, but it's in-between when they're supposed to clean between cohorts, then, yeah, it's a struggle. Which also, we're pretty tight-staffed right now, as far as the custodial department goes. Pretty much zero subs, short one custodian position. Yeah, so it's, you know, some of the maintenance has had to come fill in for custodial duties the last few days or weeks, but... the last few days or weeks, but, you know, it's working so far, but I'm not, you know, we're just hearing concerns from people, so we're not sure how to go about this or if there's anything we can really do, you know, to resolve these concerns or if it'll work itself out. I am confident that we do have proper training that we've gotten from, you know, the nurses and ODA and all the heads as to how to handle different exposures so that, you know, I'm feeling confident that if something happens and we can limit the exposure that's going to go out to a building if we can, you know, be in there doing that. Plus, we have, you know, an ample supply of PPE that, you know, takes care of all that, and it all ends up in the garbage. So, you know, the staff are pretty safe too. So that's a good note on that one. Yeah, that's pretty much all I had there is just those couple of concerns. But so, yeah. With all that said, we're looking forward to our winter break. I know a lot of the classifieds have been kind of stretched thin in different directions and into their routines, but still not, it's not normal. So everybody's ready for a breather. But yeah, we all, our leadership want to wish the board and everybody in the Silver Falls District, I hope you guys have a good holiday over the next couple of weeks and see you next year.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. Okay, well, that brings us to our first discussion item. We have item 10A, which is policy ACB, the All Students Belong policy. And this is our final reading. There'll be an action item later tonight regarding this policy. So with that, I'll open it up to any discussion that the board would like to have regarding this policy. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, the last meeting, I had a critical view of the policy, but but I'm definitely voting yes on this tonight. And just, just as an aside, thanks for sorting, for being so tolerant because I was man at the first public comment session, I was getting ready to get lambasted. And people held their fire. So I appreciate that if anybody's, you know, watching to see if I'm going to clarify what I said last time. So yeah, I guess I've been, I've been watching our staff over these years deal with diversity and inclusion issues and doing lots of training and lots of work. I've been, they've been presenting to the boards. Mr. Drew has been including us in the agendas of the administrative team and seeing that it's that this is part of everything that they've been doing. My wife's a teacher here in the district. I hear about some of the trainings that that she's gone to. So I'm approaching this topic from watching our community and our staff do it and seeing that you guys are doing a pretty good job, you know, we're on this. And we're struggling through it, you know? And I've really been satisfied with with how I've come in. And then, and I prefer solutions to be from the bottom up, team oriented, here's the problem, how are we going to deal with it? You know, it's, and then I get this policy from the top down. And I don't, it just really caught me to time when I've been spending a lot of time the past few years really, really thinking about the lack of civil discourse in our society over the past decades, actually. And that that policy just came down at the wrong time. There really wasn't a lot of overlap with Mike and with what I'm concerned about. And and the All Students Belong policy, I think this district, you know, I just want to end with, I really think the staff of this school district is doing a great job. We're all doing our work. And and the staff is especially, I've seen, I've seen some incidents and talked to people personally. And that's not to say that we can't do better and things are being missed. So I'm definitely voting yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other discussion tonight from the board? Okay. Well, as I said, it'll be up for a vote later in the evening. So that takes us to item 10B, Policy BF. That is the Board Policy Development Policy, which is in its second reading. And I don't know if anybody wishes to speak specifically to it from the policy work group. If there was anything they wanted to add from our initial conversation last time.
So if I don't want to preempt the policy work group, I did see one small correction. And then I had one small suggestion. So looking at the clean copy that's at the end of the document, the paragraph that starts, "The board approves policy with the superintendent responsible for initiating, reviewing, and recommending new policies or policy modification." The clause "will rest with the superintendent" is redundant, so that just needs to be removed. Super simple. And then a little bit further on, this issue of consulting with legal. It's very short and sweet. I think it's fine in this, in its, in the spirit of it. I just wonder whether the phrase "may consult with legal" is a little strange, like legal what kind of thing? And so I wondered if the superintendent may seek legal guidance in the development of policies if appropriate, would be a little bit more specific, a little bit clearer. So again, just a wordsmithing suggestion for your consideration. Other than that, I think it's great.
Thank you, Janet. Yeah, it makes sense what you were saying. I was just sort of reading it while you were saying it, and I think it makes complete sense.
Thank you, Janet. I appreciate the word. I think legal guidance makes much, it's much more comprehensive, and it tells you, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Janet. I agree with everything that you said. Appreciate your input.
Other comments from the board tonight for discussion? Okay. That moves us to 10C, which is a Budget Committee Candidate Assessment Scoring Matrix. And this was put together by the, the policy work group, but is not in and of itself at this point, policy. But we did add it to the, as a discussion item tonight so that we could talk about it and, you know, have a conversation about it so that the whole board, I guess, can see it and talk about it. Does anybody from the policy work group wish to kick us off with a, you know, here's how this came about kind of background?
Dan, I know, I know you want to.
I am happy if our board members would like me to try to summarize this piece.
Go ahead.
Okay. As we were discussing DBEA and and trying to make, develop that policy, also a suggestion got brought up amongst one of the the policy work group members about having a matrix. And as a, in the HR role that I do, we oftentimes have matrix that we use in hiring and to help guide, you know, selection processes. And so I think that's kind of where it birthed from was just this idea of having some of the priorities that the board has identified as they go to make their selection process. So I, in a short sense, and Lori, Tom, Shelley can can add to that if they they like. That's, that's where it came from. Thought it was a good idea to have something that captures, again, the priorities of the board in that selection process and give them a tool to use.
Thank you. Discussion amongst the board about it.
I'll just jump in. I found it really, really helpful, actually. I, I went through and sort of did my first gut check on the candidates. And then I thought, okay, now I'm going to test myself. And I went through and I scored them. And I was really pleased to see that my gut instinct matched my scores. So so it was a kind of a validating tool that way, and it was a helpful way to be able to remind ourselves or remind myself what our criteria are that we've talked about that are really important. The one that I found difficult, and I don't know that there's any way to remediate it because was the critical thinking and collaboration, just so, just because so much of that comes out in the working with someone that it's hard to assess. But I still think it's good to have on there to the extent that you can think through the candidate's background and what they discussed and give any score there at all. I think it's helpful to remember that those are important characteristics. But it's a, it can be a tricky one to kind of get a handle on when you don't, you know, you haven't really watched people in action. But I thought it was a wonderful tool. It was great for my process, and I really appreciate the work that went into it. So thank you.
Thanks, Janet.
Yeah, Dan, I don't know if this question is for you, but when I look at this matrix, everything looks good except when I get to the diversity heading. And I'm against segregating anybody. So I'm not sure why that's necessary to have that in there.
I think, thanks, Erv. And I was going to mention something similar, which is that I liked a lot of what was in here. That line seems problematic if for no other reason because I'm not going to know the answer to a lot of the categories somebody may or may not fit into. That's, it just seems kind of problematic from that perspective. I'm certainly not going to ask, nor would I expect it to be on their application. So from my perspective, I'm not sure how I would score some of that.
So one thing I want to mention in response to that is actually in our policy, we do have specific language that says gender and occupation and place of residence. So that language has been in there for years. And so that hasn't been changed by this board or any other board. So that's just, and I think Dawn Tacker could really talk more to that as well. She was instrumental and did an excellent job of putting this matrix together. But I think it was, you know, reflective of the language that's already in our policy. So it's not any different than what you've been voting on for years. It's just more, a little bit more detailed in the matrix. So, yeah, if you, if you look at the language, you'll see.
Yeah, thank you. I noticed that in this particular chart, sort of diversity of residents was not particularly represented. I didn't know it was that. Mentional, did you guys talk about that? I know it's a policy today.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, you kept cutting out, so I couldn't hear everything that you said.
Did you guys talk about the, you know, where somebody lives, the zone or the sort of rural versus in town? That I know policy references that as well as referencing gender, the, but it's not here. And then some of the things on the diversity line aren't exactly in policy. And like I said, might be difficult to ascertain. So I was curious if those specific things were.
I think that that was brought up. I don't think it was, it clearly obviously didn't make it on to this matrix. But I do think that we did discuss that as a, is something that's been in policy.
Okay.
Yeah, Jonathan. Yeah, it's, it's, it's in the policy. So the policy is what guides. And the, the matrix is just kind of a guide. And I would, I would suggest that we probably should either add location to that diversity line or remove the, all the items in the parentheses. Something like that, just to either, either list them all out or don't list any of them. It seems to give a priority the way it's written. And I, but, but just, I guess for Dan, this is, this is, is there any, is there any legal issues? I guess I'm asking, yeah, HR, Dan, if that's okay. Any legal issues with adding? I mean, this is, this is just a guide. We don't even really have to follow the points. I mean, I'm just, is there any legal problems with this?
Well, you know, you are, you're voting to select people to serve on your budget committee. So in a volunteer capacity. And so, so I'm not necessarily a politician or a policy expert, but my, my best guess would be no. I think in a hiring capacity, as we hire, we do have protected classes of people that the, the, the state has outlined certain, certain groups of people that do, that have, potentially have some preferences and, and that. And so we take those things into consideration in our hiring practices. You know, for instance, there's, there's a, there's a military component that has to be scored differently if you're a member of the military, as an example. So, but no, for your purposes, I would, my guess would be not.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, I guess that's what is kind of, is kind of cloudy. There's a lot other diversity groups. And that's what I guess I was getting at. Why were there just three groups listed? Like I said years ago, until we stop segregating, we'll never have equality, never. So I don't even like the scoring system. I mean, that's great for individuals to make your own score, but I don't like the matrix to come up and to have to verbally share with the public why you choose a committee member over somebody else. I just believe they're the best qualified, and that's the end of the story. I think it's kind of discriminatory to publicly say that. So that's how I feel about that.
Yeah, and just for clarity, Erv, I think that the intent right now is that this would be something you could use supplementary to making your decision. You could choose to use it or not. It's not required by policy, at least at this point. And, and so you would be welcome to choose to use it or to choose to make your decision based on whatever you personally thought was the most important set of criteria.
Well, and I know that statement's been used several times. It's not in policy right now, but it's kind of creeping that way. So just beware.
Yes, Jennifer.
And I would like to give feedback. I'd like us to be able to revisit this after the policy's been revised because right now what I'm doing is comparing the policy to the matrix to see where there's a match. And there are some places where we don't have matches, and that could be resolved in, you know, a policy proposal. So that's just my preface. I, like, for example, involvement is not in the policy. It's a fine value. I think that if we agreed on that value, I think that that's great, but it is not in the policy that I could see anyway. I did notice also that the essential requirements at the top mentioned that the applicant has not served on the budget committee for more than a one, one, three-year term. And that seems to match with our policy because our policy says it's the usual practice to limit services to two consecutive three-year terms. Now, we haven't always, people haven't always voted that way. But that does seem to match, right? But then down below, when it talks about a fresh perspective, it seems to limit that timeframe even further. And that seems to be a value choice that's not necessarily in the policy to that degree. And so I just, if that's what the policy or that's what, there is an agreement on that that is a value, I think that's great. I just want to make sure that we have alignment and that there's agreement. And I also noticed that gender was gender. I don't remember seeing gender on the matrix, but it is in the policy. was gender. I, I, I don't remember seeing gender on the matrix, but it is in the policy and also the pit place of residence.
Gender's on the diversity row, Jennifer, but it's, that also then lists other qualities that aren't in policy and omits some that are. So it's, there's a little bit of a mismatch there.
Yeah. And again, I don't think that it's, um, I personally, um, like the idea of considering, um, diversity. Um, I do appreciate the concern about, well, how would I know, you know, how, how the person identifies? I, that, I think that's a valid point and I don't know how to resolve that. Um, but I do appreciate, um, ideas around, that's a value that I have. Um, but again, I think we need agreement, uh, before, you know, something becomes super solid. Um, so, yeah, those are just, that's just my feedback, but I'd like to revisit this again because I'm assuming that the policy, uh, group is not done.
Yeah, I had a question. Oh, if I may, um, I, I would like to direct it to Mr. Stadley. Um, Mr. Stadley, you mentioned that there were other diversity groups that weren't mentioned that you, could you tell me a little bit more about those? I'm on the policy committee and I just want to hear your voice on that.
Uh, Lori, and I appreciate you asking, but I don't think this is the time or the place to discuss this.
Oh. Okay, thank you.
Just have one quick thing and, and I don't, I'm not on the policy committee. So at the risk of speaking for them, um, I don't think that list under diversity was meant to be all-inclusive in terms of capturing everyone that we would hope to include. I think the spirit of it is, uh, a spirit of, of inviting people with diverse lived experiences, regardless of what they are, that reflect our, this diversity of our student body and putting that as a priority. Saying that we want diverse voices, um, in, in our committees, on our board, in all aspects of our, of our school district that reflect our students. And so I think it's, it's the spirit of that philosophy more than anything else. At that.
Yes, Jennifer.
Uh, and I didn't write this down, but because of what, it, it does piggyback on what Janet has to say about, um, welcoming. Um, the bit about technical skills kind of made me, give me pause because having, I don't want people to be scared away, you know, or us to discount people because they don't have technical skills. Because people have lots to offer in many different packages. And so I just, I, I mean, I can't, I'm not dead set against it. Obviously I didn't even write it down to discuss it, but it just kind of gave me pause because I want, again, everyone to feel welcome.
That's a good point. Yeah. And it's, it's not a super technical position. I mean, technical skills can be very beneficial, but I don't know that it's a hard, yeah, it's an interesting point. Okay. Any, any other conversation about this? Like, for what it's worth, I agree. I mean, at some point, should this either become policy or attempt to become policy, we'd have to re-discuss it. And then of course, the, the the policy itself is under review right now. And so that will be discussed, I'm sure in the future, maybe as well.
And ultimately, I think this will be good feedback for the policy work group committee. I think there, uh, with knowing that we, um, you needed to make your selections for the budget committee. There was, uh, uh, wanting to have this tool to you because we knew the policy wasn't going to be adopted or be readied or be ready for you in advance of the selection. So we thought this was a good first step in, in providing you a tool to use. And we can take your feedback back to, back to that and hopefully bring both the policy and the matrix to you, um, here in a month or so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the feedback.
Jonathan, I just also wanted to point out that members of the work group who've been, it's been really great to collaborate them. We have three board members, Tom, Shelley and Lori. And, and also I wanted to give a special shout out to, uh, Dawn Tacker and Dixon Bledsoe for their help as well. Um, just wanted to make sure I gave them my thanks.
Great.
Yeah, what, oh, go ahead. Yeah, what I, what I heard in the real, um, we need to work on the policy and then, you know, and then have the matrix really align very closely with, with the verbiage and the wording in, in the policy. That's kind of my, my takeaway here. And it's, um, yeah, that was my takeaway. Thank you.
My guess is we'll bring you the policy and align the matrix to after the policy is adopted. Again, I think that would be my guess.
All right. Well, we're going to move to 10D, which is an opportunity to discuss, to discuss the budget committee applicants themselves. You know, we're going to have the opportunity to appoint these applicants later on, but this is an opportunity, really if nothing else, to share sort of the, the things you were looking for. And if you wish to say anything at all about why you're going to vote for who you might vote for, uh, now's the point in time, there will be an opportunity later as well, right? So, uh, both, both are good opportunities, but this seemed like it might be a really clear time if you wanted to talk about it, to have a conversation. Well, I, I guess I'll go, um, I, you know, I, I thought we had a fantastic group of applicants. They seemed really like they'd all make great candidates. And so, uh, you know, taking a look at it was not necessarily, you know, no, nobody really stood out as like, oh, I have to go here or, you know, avoid somebody, right? It was a really good group is what I'm saying. And so, you know, I think that made it hard in a lot of ways, and yet it's a good problem to have. So kudos to you guys for applying. I, I want to say first, thank you. And, um, you know, in terms of what I was looking for, yeah, you know, sort of diversity of thought, uh, trying to look at who might bring something newer, different as well as experience in some cases, um, you know, who's been through the process, understands it and, and can help. And so, you know, to that end, I was planning to, uh, on my initial ballot, go the direction of Aaron and Astrid, but I'm open for conversation. I'm not absolutely rock solid on, on anybody. Like I said, it was a great group of candidates. So there's my open and pouring. Yes.
Well, one, again, you know, I do applaud the policy committee for, uh, taking on the budget committee's policy because it is difficult to choose people every year and you're balancing values that are in the policy. Um, and one of the things that has been important to me in the past is to, um, really honor that idea of the two terms. But then last year I felt like we needed, uh, you know, a woman from the outlined areas was a, a great option and that we were lacking in that area. And so, um, I voted in a different direction. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is that it's really hard to, um, you know, follow every single value that's in, um, the policy. Um, I do, I, I, I want to put a, a plug for, in for Astrid Potter. Astrid, um, has been the, a, a board member at the Community Roots School um, for quite a while and my children have gone there. And so I know her work there. Um, she often asks me, you know, we see each other, we're in the same neighborhood and we see each other on the street and we have conversations about, um, governance and deep, discussions on governance. And so I can't, for, for me, it's really hard to not vote for Astrid because I really appreciate her dedication and perspective, um, on those things. And she has been, um, I've noticed, uh, attending our meetings for a long time now. And she stays to the very end, even if they're super boring. Um, and so, um, I, I'm leaning towards, towards Astrid. Um, and boy, it is hard, you know, I'm like, we, we have, we only have two. Um, but I, I also, I have to just, um, plug also Matthew, um, Gaetan, Ga- Ga- Gaetan, Gaetan, I think is how you say it. Uh, I was super impressed with his, uh, experiences and point of view and involvement with our schools. Um, so those are the two that I'm leaning towards, but again, I am open and, and wanting to hear what other people have to say.
I too, uh, was very impressed with Matt Gaetan, um, with his experience, um, also his involvement. I believe that he would do a superb job and I'm, I was impressed by Astrid as well. And so I would like to stand by Matt Gaetan and Astrid Potter. For the same reasons mentioned, so.
I'd also put a quick plug in that, um, that Matt Gaetan is also from Zone Two, which isn't currently represented. So that was, um, I didn't look too heavily at the zones, but I did consider them and saw where the diversity was from. So, um, I appreciated the fact that he had Fortune 500 budget experience and, um, and bilingual and, and bring some lived experiences that are, I think, important for our district. So, um, I'm really excited to support him as well.
Okay, any other conversation? Right? Well, that brings us to our administrator and staff reports with the superintendent report. Uh, first, so you're up.
Great, thank you, Jonathan. I'm just going to share the screen if I can. I always like to go visual if I can. And, and if you just bear with me, um, here, let me see. All right. Can y'all see that? We good?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to give you guys a few updates. And first I just wanted to say that, you know, it's the highlight of uh, my day or, or here, uh, this evening to see our kids, um, present. I, I, there's nothing better than that in the world and it reminds all of us exactly why we're here. Um, there's only one reason why we're here and that's for, for our kiddos and, and their families. And it's just awesome. And I think it was Madison that brought up the ugly sweater contest. I, I have an extra large one with these reindeer horns on. I'll have to wear that. Maybe I'll get a good score from that. I, I don't know. Maybe I'll check in with her on that. I also wanted to get a special shout out to Ms. Lofton's, uh, second grade class at Scotts Mills. I had the opportunity to read to them, uh, in a virtual setting, um, with my lesson plan. And I will tell you that I was appropriately nervous. Just like, just like any teacher would be, just like any new teacher. It was just awesome. Loved every second of it. So, uh, but anyway, I have a few updates I'd like to give to you and it, they revolve around four focal points. And, and each one, uh, relates directly to our district strategic plan. And I just want to kind of walk you through what we're working on right now. Any one of these focal points would be a full-time job. And we have four of them going on simultaneously. And the reason for that is we are in a global pandemic. So when we come back to school and we will, uh, we don't have any time to waste. We can't leave anything to chance. And so I wanted to go over with you the four things that we're working on right now. And the first of course is the reconfiguration to take K, uh, to take Mark Twain and Robert Frost Elementary's to full K-five models. We've got to get kids into a six-year continuum. Uh, having a, a, uh, transition after second grade, especially what kids have already been through, um, is just not what's best for kids. And we all unanimously agree to that. Um, and you know, it's, it's, it's time to do it and the time to do it's now because um, it's already going to take us enough time to catch kids up once they come back. So we're, we're moving on that now. The stage that we're at right now is drawing the boundary and we finished our first boundary, uh, second boundary meeting uh, last week and, and that went really well. And I think in the third meeting coming January 7th, uh, that's where the work will start to get serious, where we start to lay down different scenarios for how that boundary is going to look. Um, it is difficult. We don't take the decision to go forward with the K-five configuration and to draw a boundary this year lightly. We don't take it lightly at all, but we base all of our decisions off of data and what's most compelling for kids. And so that argument, uh, was not, um, that decision wasn't taken lightly and was very necessary. Um, the second is our work on guaranteed and viable curriculum. And that is, um, to, to make sure that we can make a commitment to our community that when we say a child in one year is going to learn a year's worth of content, that we clearly map that out for our community and we make it viable. So teachers are able to teach it in an instructional year. And so there's a lot that goes into that. We're taking our pre, uh, prerequisite steps right now. Uh, we are taking a look at common core state standards, which is the law. We have to deliver and teach the common core state standards. We are currently mapping those out with teacher teams. Teachers are fully in the driver's seat of this work. Um, and this is a five-year plan. Um, but again, going back to our sense of urgency where we can't leave anything to chance and we can't waste any time once kids come back. The best thing that districts can do right now is to focus on this work. Uh, there's nothing more important than asking the question, what do we expect students to learn? How do we know if they'll learn it, they've learned it? And then what do we do for the ones that haven't mastered it? And the ones that need more rigor on top of that? So that's the second focal point. Um, the long-range facilities planning, Brett Davidson, I thought articulated it extremely well because he lives it every day. Um, and that is, uh, we have a lot of work to do so that our facilities reflect the excellence of our community. And that comes, language comes directly from the strategic plan and it's exciting. And I think the long-range facilities planning committee, um, is, I've enjoyed, um, the discussions. I've gotten to meet many of the members, uh, personally. And I look forward to our next meeting on Wednesday. Um, and then of course, the fourth focal point and something that we will be starting, uh, that we're right in the middle of actually is our new process, uh, for, uh, making leadership selections in Silver Falls School District going forward. And I'd like to give a special shout out to Jennifer Traeger and Janet Allenak for being incredibly, um, gracious, uh, thought partners. Um, I've learned as much from them and I, I hope they've taken some away from this process too, and will be working together all year on this. Um, we take the leaders, uh, hiring of our leaders with the utmost seriousness. In my opinion, as a leader, there's nothing more important. Um, and eventually, you know, in the future, we'll be rolling this type of hiring process down for all staff. And so, and it just all goes under the, the idea that our kids deserve and, and need the best possible adults in front of them uh, possible. And so those are the four focal points we have going on. Now each one, we could teach a semester-long course about, but that gives you kind of the general idea of, of what it is that we're working on. Um, and I also wanted to give a shout out to all of you because as you know, I am a big fan of making sure everybody has plenty to do. And so, and that all starts with the board. And I am so proud of our board and, and the, the level of engagement that we have, have, um, at this point is unbelievable. It's awesome. In fact, I think pretty much every week I've had a chance to work with every single one of you on a weekly basis because of these different work groups. And, and, um, I just wanted to give a special shout out and policy work group. We have Tom, Shelley and Lori. I, I mentioned that Dixon and Dawn or Tacker are on that, uh, work group as well. We have our hiring work group. It's a, it's an advisory work group with Jennifer and Janet. And we have a different topic each week that we discuss, uh, around, uh, everything from our philosophy of hiring, uh, to what our outcomes, we want our outcomes to be, and then specific feedback on the updates that we're giving them, uh, in real time. Uh, the finance work group, uh, Steve Nielsen and I'll be starting that in January. And I'd like to thank Janet Allenak for being a part of that. And Jonathan, um, I'm maybe committing what I would like to say is a suicide and, and hopefully not. And I'd like to thank Janet Allen Act for being a part of that. And Jonathan, I'm maybe committing what I would like to say is a suicide and, and hopefully not. Violating my hashtag no surprises, but I just hadn't heard back from you yet, and I had to get this put down. So I wanted to give you a future. Thank you for serving on the finance work group, which I know is an area of great interest to you. Thank you for that. The long range facilities planning committee. And like I've said before, this is, if I had to rank. The importance of this work, it's right up there and Tom and Shelley, thank you. It's a big time commitment and I really appreciate that. And then we have a board member at each one of our communications meetings, and these meetings are formerly known as labor management. And just to tell you, that's a personal thing with me. Labor management to me sounds very archaic. It's, it's, it's an old school term that I think. I think communications sounds much more modern and sophisticated, if you will. And a much more equal, if you will, on both sides. And, and we just want, that's what it's for, is for communicating with each other. And Lori on the SFA side and Janet on the OSEA side. I just want to thank you for that as well. And if you just take a look, you know. At the visual, I mean, I just, I'm just really impressed with your willingness as a board to be engaged in these different topics. And. You know, of course, on the boundary work group, we have rotating. Each one of you has signed up for, for. One or more meetings there as well as observers. So. I just want to make sure I thank you for that. And, you know, last night I got an email from. Johnny Farrow, and. It was some resources around mental health and wellness this time of year going into the holidays. And Dan, my iPad just, screensaver just went on, but I cannot remember our wonderful. Employee that, that wrote this piece. Could you?
I believe it was April Murphy was her name.
April Murphy, that's it. So I wanted to make sure I thanked April Murphy for, for putting this together and. And, you know, I, I think, you know, this is such an important time of year that I want to read this if I could, if you'll just indulge me because I think it's important. And I want our public to hear this as well. And it says, mental wellness during the holidays. Holidays are approaching, and as you know, this can be a time of celebration for some. It can also be a struggle for others. The holidays bring a mix of emotions. There's a lot to do, and we often feel overwhelmed, anxious, depressed or stressed. The holidays can also bring more awareness to the void of. A, a loved one lost or bring awareness to our own loneliness and family dynamics. If you're experiencing any of these feelings, know that you are not alone. There are many people who care about you and want to support you. Think of at least one friend, family member, or support person you can reach out to, to share your feelings with. Also know that these strong feelings will not last forever. Even though they often feel like they will, in these moments, it often helps to think of what you would tell someone you love. That was experiencing the same strong emotions. There are resources to help and people ready to support you. And I just want everybody to know that I, I placed. The original document on board book. It has resources for people. If you're watching and you like to access those, please do so. But this doesn't just have to do with our kiddos, who are our most important part of. Silver Falls School District. It also has to do with the adults in the system. And sometimes this can be an incredibly painful time of year. I am one of those people. And I just want the public to know that you're not alone. I want our staff to know that this is the exact reason why I give out my cell phone number to every single Silver Falls staff member. And urge you to call me if there's something keeping you up at night, or you want to think something through. That I'll be there for you as well. And so just wanted to make sure that I shared that very important piece. And. And I think it's important for us to remember that when, that this can be a joyous time of year, but. You know, sometimes when we assume that others feel the same way, you know, we just, it's, it's important that we be mindful of that. And, and lastly, I just wanted to say this, and that is that. You know, if it's one thing I've learned in leadership. And, and something that I've shared with administrators also, the first thing that I always say in, in what I've learned from leadership is that. More than one thing can be true at the same time. And people are multifaceted. Those two things are universal facts. And I just wanted to end with the saying of be kind for everyone you meet is fighting a battle you know nothing about. And I think it's really important that the person standing in front of us or behind us in line. Whether it's Starbucks or at the store or. Whatever else could be fighting an incredible battle that we know nothing about. And we may think everything's fine. And. At the end of the day, there's a lot more to it. So I just think it's a good reminder of the holiday season. I just wanted to give you those updates. And also to you as a board, my heartfelt thanks. It has been. And, and will continue to be a real gift to, to serve you, to work for you. And, and thank you for giving me the time.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate you taking the time as well. Anybody have any questions for Scott at this point? Okay. We will move on to our financial report with Steve Nielsen.
Jonathan, Steve just got dropped, so he's trying to. Get back on.
Well, just give it a second here. Debbie, are you in touch with him? Is he able to get back on or is he like lost his internet or something?
It's happening to him throughout the day today. So Maddie's looking for him, so she's going to bring him in. He has been having trouble with that today.
And Steve made it a point to be at the central office too, to make sure his internet was working and. So reminder to all of us that things don't always go as we plan. On, in an online world, in a two dimensional world. And. We know Steve is. Working really hard right now to get back online, I'm sure.
Yeah, he's stuck. He can't get back on.
Scott, is, is that something that you think we would have somebody else be able to bring up and talk to at all? I know there's. Two things. One is the financial report. The other is the enrollment report. I suspect we could look at that regardless possibly.
He was just texting me right now. He has some pretty technical information to share, Jonathan, and. And out, yeah, it says outlook is down too. So I don't think that's something that. Any one of us can freestyle with, if you will. And.
Well, my recommendation then is that we proceed with the agenda and we come back to it if he's able to.
Yeah. And the reason why I say that is he went over all the information with me at five o'clock and my head was spinning. So. And Steve. You know. It's really the one that needs to present that.
Yeah, understood. And, you know, it's always hard with these technical challenges during this time. Would you let him know that if he's able to get back on, we would make time for him?
Okay, I will do that.
All right.
I just.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I just told him that, Scott.
Okay, thank, thank you, Debbie.
Well, we'll move into board reports. This is an opportunity for board members to share. Relevant information back with the rest of the board. They have anything to share. Okay, oh, Janet, yeah.
I just wanted to give a shout out and a thank you. To, without excluding anyone else, to the high school teachers and counselors. Who I know were working quadruple overtime in the past couple of weeks to get their kiddos to a successful end of their first quarter. The stakes were high for some of those kids and. Boy, oh, boy, I think the, the staff just went all out. Above and beyond. So I just wanted to, to thank them for that, for that effort.
Great, thanks, Jen. Yes, Jen.
I just wanted to follow up on the. Principal search group that Janet and I are serving on. When Scott said a little while ago that he's learning from us and we're learning from him. I think that can be true, but I, I think that it's a crash course in. An amazing rigorous hiring process that I feel like I'm. Getting professional development from Scott and so, and Dan. And so thank you both for. Creating this rigorous process and, and I think. I guess my point is, is that the goal is to find a top candidate. That fits our district through a rigorous process and. Scott and Dan, the office of the superintendent. Have committed to making sure that Janet and I are very well informed, like they share, they, they said, we'll share. Just about everything with you. And so I wanted just to, to bring that up to the board because I thought it was a good. Perspective on what's going on in that arena.
Thank you, Jennifer. Sounds really positive. I'm glad you guys are able to be on that. Okay. With that, we will move to our second public comment period. This would be a follow on for items related to agenda items or action items. Anybody, Debbie, that's requested an audience?
Not yet. I've just promoted Steve.
Okay. Well, given that there is nobody queued up for public comment, let's bounce back and hello, Steve, and we'll let Steve run through his. Report tonight.
Hi, everybody. Sorry for the problem. I'm here at the district office, but. I was on until about a minute before Scott ended there and it kicked me off and the internet was down for about five minutes. So my apologies. So I had a lot of updates tonight. First is the governor's recommended budget that came out on Tuesday, the first of December. I believe we. Scott had forwarded to you COSA's summary, Morgan Allen's summary of the budget. That day, but in a nutshell. You know, the, the. The state school fund is set at $9.1 billion for the 2123 biennium. Which is. Basically static. A reminder that we're at 9.0 billion for the current biennium. So. That's not great, but essentially compared to what we were looking at back in April. If we were to say that this is where we're at today, that's. A better place than where we thought we could be. And, and it is a starting point to the budget process at the state level. The next step is the co-chairs, legislative co-chairs. Proposed budget, which. Will, will come out in about four to six weeks. Which usually coincides with the start of the legislative session. So it'll be interesting to see what they do with that. It'll also be very interesting to see where the next quarterly economic forecast comes, comes. In at. Obviously, it could go either way at this point. So. A couple of other features to the state budget, the high school success or measure $98 are. Are fully funded and the SIA. Students Success Act dollars are funded. I believe below the level they were originally planned for. But higher than where we are now. So. You know, we, as, as, as Silver Falls, we were expecting to get $3 million for that this year. Then we didn't think we were going to get anything and it landed at $1 million. From, from the explanation I heard. It looks like we would be somewhere in between those two figures next year, two million or maybe slightly more. So again. The governor's recommended budget is the starting point for the whole process. And we'll just continue to, to get information as we move forward. In terms of our. Current year financial statements, the link that, that was provided on the board book agenda. There's a three page financial report for. The month of November and year to date. 202021. The first page is the general fund revenue summary. You can see that based on the dials at the top of the page that. We are on track with all of our revenue sources year to date. November is always a fun month because it's our, our. Highest revenue month of the year. State school fund payment and over 80% of our property taxes, budgeted property taxes are received. In the month of November. So. So it's a big revenue month. As always, we have the top 10 list there and a comparison to. Projected and also comparison to the prior year to date. So really no surprises there. When you go to page two and look at the expenditure summary. There's a few things that jump out. You can see that the actual year to date expenditures are about. Two and a half percentage points below projected. Which really is not a surprise when you, when you look at salaries and benefits, we're down about a percentage point. Again, that's not a surprise because we do have. You know, a few vacancies that weren't filled due to the situation with COVID. And just some moving pieces there. But where you really see the difference is that third dial. All other objects, purchase services and supplies and so on and so forth is down. Nine, about nine percentage points from where we would be expected to be at this time of year. So. Again, that is not expected due to this, not surprising due to the circumstances we are currently in. And the two big players in that are transportation costs. Coming in quite, obviously a lot lower than, than budgeted and substitute. Teacher and substitute classified costs being way down as well. So those are the, the two big pieces. To that. So where that really jumps out is in that, that first chart down on the right. Where you see purchase services. Where it shows you the current year to date versus last year to date. So that's where that shows up. So in terms of. The budget, there's, there's a, if you go to the third page, there's a lot. A lot of moving pieces this year due to the pandemic. And a lot of timing differences that, that go on. So one. Highlight, I want.
I think we lost Steve again.
I wanted to point out the.
Yeah, it looks like we have completely lost him now. That's too bad. Guessing he may pop back on at some point again. And if he does, I certainly want to give him a chance to finish. Let me.
Yeah, he's, he's really trying. I, I feel really bad for Steve because he really prepared for tonight too. He's really trying to get back on.
Well, I see his. His tile reappeared, so maybe he'll be able to join in here. his tile reappeared, so maybe he'll be able to join again here. No, no Debbie, are you in contact with Steve? I see his tile reappeared. Do you know if he's able to join back on?
He hasn't said anything. He's trying to reconnect.
Okay, we'll give it another, you know, minute and then I guess we'll proceed if we're not able to continue with Steve. No, Larry just disappeared. Let's, let's see if he reappears though and just is able to join. Well, I think what we ought to do is proceed, let's double check public comment. And if he still hasn't joined, then we'll proceed through action items and presuming he joins back in, we'll give him an opportunity to to finish his presentation.
Yeah, it looks like he can't reconnect again. He said to move on, please.
Okay. All right. Well, let's jump back to public comment. Did you receive any requests in the meantime?
I'm double checking again. Nothing.
Okay, well, we're going to move on to item 14A, which is our action item regarding policy ACB, all students belong. And we've already had some conversation about it. And at this point, I would accept a motion to adopt policy ACB as is attached to the board book.
Jonathan, I would love to make a motion to accept and pass policy ACB, our all students belong policy.
Second.
And second.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All right Debbie, please take the vote.
Janet? Yes. Tom?
Hi.
Erv?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Motion passes. Right next up, we are going to go through the process of appointing our two budget committee members from the five applicants. And we did have a little bit of an opportunity to discuss those, those applicants. Our process tonight is going to be as follows and I'll sort of summarize here. We're going to roll through and do a roll call of each board member. Each board member will basically call off their ballot, which will amount to naming two candidates that they would like to see appointed to the three year term. Yeah, after one round, there are two candidates that have four or more votes. The process is completed and we will have our two applicants that are selected and we'll be done with that process. If if there is one that has four and one that does not, we will proceed with a, one will be finalized, but then we'll proceed with some discussion and a second round of voting for the second applicant. Of course, if neither end up before, if none, I should say, end up before, then we will end up going through a round of conversation and having another vote and we will repeat until we have two candidates that receive a majority of the board. So when your name is called, you will have the opportunity to list off the two candidates as well as any additional preferably brief comments that you'd like to make as to why you chose those two candidates. And then we'll continue through and Debbie will just roll call through everybody that way. Are there any questions about the process before we we jump in? Okay. Well Debbie, I will let you run the roll call, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Janet.
I would like to nominate Matthew Guyton and Astrid Potter.
Thank you. Tom?
Matthew and Astrid.
Jonathan?
Aaron and Astrid.
Lori?
Yes. Astrid Potter and Nat Guyton.
Kelly?
Matthew Guyton and Astrid Potter.
Erv?
Aaron and Astrid, please.
Jennifer?
Astrid Potter and Matthew Guyton, please.
Can I have a check, please, my numbers?
Yep, I checked them already.
Thank you.
Perfect. So with that, thank you for taking that roll call and putting it on the spreadsheet and made it really easy to follow. With that, we have our two budget committee members. Congratulations, Matthew and Astrid. You have been selected for three years. All right, super smooth. Thanks. That brings us to item 15, other items. Anybody have anything else for the good of the order tonight? Yes, Jennifer.
You said one thing I wanted to shout out to Janet for sending us that article about governance. And I haven't read all of it, but I did read some of it. And so thank you very much. It looks super promising.
Thank you Jennifer.
The same. Yes, I deeply appreciated you sending that Janet. And again, I'm not done either and I I had a bowl of popcorn and a soda, so I still have to work my way through it, but what I am reading is is very compelling. It's a wonderful article. Thank you.
Yeah, Janet, I agree. I with both Jennifer and Lori. Thank you for sending it. It is, it has so much good information about current governance and you know, how to govern in this day and age. It's, I think it should be sent out to everybody. So they understand what governance is and they can educate themselves as well. So thank you for doing that. It's a long one, but it's great. So thank you very much.
Yes.
Different thing. Principal Davison mentioned the idea of retaining the flexibility that has benefited so many students during this time. And I just wanted to say that I did read an article that said about 10% of students are doing better in this model. Most kids are not, but 10% are doing better. And so I guess that's my question for all of us is how can we address the that in the future?
An interesting point. Thank you.
I I'll just tag on to that quickly Jennifer. I think there are going to be a lot of lessons that we all take away from this time professionally and academically. And and I I'm looking forward to all of us, not just going back to what we did before, but to really use those lessons so that we can be better. I think there's a real opportunity there. So I'm excited about that for us. Yeah.
Yes, Tom.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Jennifer and Janet said because I'm hearing the same reports from my, my wife and her friends from other districts is that they're surprisingly, you'll get a student here and there that's doing better. And and that's something we need to, we need to remember, you know, when this is over. So it's interesting that other people are noticing that. And it's kind of a consistent thing. I find that interesting.
All right, well, I don't see Steve back on. A final check here, Debbie or Scott or anybody who knows, is he able to rejoin?
Yeah, he's not. The the district office internet's completely down.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Okay, well, we will look forward to, can he, I guess if he left out anything that he thought was compelling, can he send that out maybe to the board?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, well, without objection, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a great evening.
Jonathan?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we have executed session.
Thank you.
And we'll need to come out of executive session.
Again, for the record, I know we're recording this. I want to apologize to both all, really all of you and then to the public for, first of all, forgetting that we were going to go into exec session. And then as we figured out the technical questions of how to join it, we dropped off before I was able to read the the required designation for why we were going into executive session. And after some additional discussion, we are going to opt to not go into executive session tonight and to pick it up at a future meeting or in a special meeting if necessary.
Sounds good.
Better next time.
Correct.
Only, I I just have a little concern. If you want to call a special session because you need to get this for because you need to get this, Dan, it might be a little bit difficult to get a quorum if the holidays are coming up, if you need it before the holidays. So just, I'm just, I just want to throw that out there just in case.
I appreciate that heads up. I don't think we'll need a special session. I think the 28th will be, will be fine. But I appreciate that.
Okay. Thanks for your patience, everybody. All right, so with that, now we're actually going to go ahead and adjourn and I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.